All right, I'm gonna call the November 12th meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order, and I would like to welcome, uh, thank you Sheriff, I'd like to welcome all of you in attendance. I like seeing some young faces in our crowd and showing a little interest of what we do here. So, thank y'all for coming. Now, let's roll right on along, announcements. Anybody?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, next month will be the County Employee Service Awards, and if we could, we typically, what we'll do is need to recess this meeting until 5 o'clock on December the...recess this meeting until 5 o'clock on December the 10th, and we'll, uh, do these employee service awards, and then we'll call our regular meeting to order, at 6 o'clock, yeah, at regular time, that's how we've handled it typically. Chester, you have, you look like you want to go.
Oh, I was just wondering why we're, we checked the dates.
December the 10th would be the second Tuesday.
Why are we gonna recess to that day?
Well, because it, our regularly scheduled meetings at 6.
You don't wanna do, you don't wanna do that?
No, we wanna do that before the meeting.
Gotcha, that's good. Good, that'll work.
I am, um, not gonna be here for the December 10th meeting, Mr. Vice Chairman. Uh, you'll be here.
I go to Washington on the 3rd, for Stellantis School, Washington about the federal budget, about the ill, one of the things. Uh, yeah, I guess we'll be back.
Aight, good. Good. Anything else under announcements? We'll pull all rise, let's observe a moment of silence, and I'm gonna ask, uh, County Manager, Mr. Rowland, please, and pledge allegiance.
Please join me and recite and pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We do not have a public hearing on our agenda for tonight, so let's roll right into the public comment period. Number one, Mr. John DeVille, Medicaid expansion, welcome, John.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Saul, Mr. Jones, Mr. Rowland, Mr. Decker. I'd like to talk to you tonight for a few minutes about Medicaid expansion and the possibility of this board supporting Medicaid expansion in North Carolina. It's no secret to anybody who's been following the budget process since last July that the main reason for the budget impasse is, um, the tussle over whether or not to expand Medicaid. So, we've had so many budgets passed, but that's still the main sticking point. So, just a few, a few numbers to make sure that, uh, maybe general public and you all are familiar with what Medicaid might give us and what failure to expand Medicaid in North Carolina, failure to expand Medicaid in Macon County does. So, right now, um, failure to expand Medicaid in North Carolina deprives 464 North Carolinians of affordable healthcare. Uh, 90% of that cost is paid for by the federal government, the other 10% is picked up by hospitals and pay plans. Since 2014, North Carolina taxpayers have sent $8.3 billion outside of the state in federal taxes that have gone to Medicaid, Medicaid expansion, and 30 other, excuse me, 36 other states in the District of Columbia. If we were to expand Medicaid in North Carolina, the 464,000 people that I just spoke of would receive Medicaid, that would rise to 634,000 by 2022 and then stabilize. Federal funding flowing into North Carolina would rise by 2.8 billion this year and climb to 4.7 billion by 2022. All the research shows that parents who have healthcare are more proactive in their children's healthcare. Jobs, Medicaid expansion would create 37, 200 more jobs by 2022. The gross state product would go from, would increase 1.9 billion next year and go up to 2.9 billion by 2022 with Medicaid expansion. There would be $100 million in additional county revenue over the three-year period. The additional revenues could help state and counties address other budgetary needs and relieve pressure to increase property taxes. Since 2013, and everybody in this room is familiar with this, we are losing healthcare at our rural hospitals, we're losing hospitals. Since 2013, we have shut down five rural hospitals in North Carolina. 70% of North Carolina's rural counties, and that's 80 counties, 70% of those rural counties are already designated as medical deserts for their lack of primary care availability. The following numbers come from Healthcare Can't Wait. Medicaid expansion would cover an additional 665 people in Macon County. It would create 72 new jobs in Macon County. It would create $27.7 million in additional business in Macon County. It would create $229,000 in new county revenues for us. It would help with the opioid epidemic. In 2017, there were five opioid deaths and 28 emergency room visits for opioid overdose, um, overdoses in Macon County. There is substantial money set aside in Medicaid to deal with that. Medicaid expansion would allow for hundreds of uninsured Macon County citizens with substance abuse disorders. I wanna call your attention to, uh, and this has gotten, I just talked with Commissioner Gillespie right before the meeting, and he was unfamiliar with this, and my guess is that almost everybody in North Carolina is unfamiliar with some back and forth between your brother Chairman Dale Wiggins over in Graham County and Majority Leader Phil Berger. So, and I'll give you copy, you all copies of this, this back and forth correspondence. So, on August 29th of this year, Chairman Wiggins, Republican Chair, Graham County, wrote a letter to, um, to government officials, to North Carolina government officials, asking for support for Medicaid expansion. Specifically, he was looking for, there's basically two types of Medicaid expansion. There is a straight-up Medicaid expansion, and then there is a proposal that's been in the North Carolina House, and Representative Corbin has been one of the co-sponsors of that bill. That's called "An Act to Provide Health Coverage to the Residents of North Carolina Under the North Carolina Healthcare for Working Families Program." So, basically, it's Medicaid expansion with a work requirement. And Chairman Wiggins over in Graham County was imploring state officials to support Kevin Corbin and that form of Medicaid expansion. And he pointed out that the Graham County Commissioners had passed a unanimous vote to support Medicaid expansion, uh, in the state. So, he sent that out to various people. Uh, it hit the desk of Governor Cooper, Governor Cooper wrote back to him, and then apparently then Majority Leader, Senator Berger caught wind of this and then wrote a letter to Chairman Wiggins on September 10th of this year, um, and he basically called Chairman Wiggins a political pawn, which is an interesting insult, the same insult that he used on teachers last week. And I just wanna read you a few excerpts from Chairman Wiggins' letter back to Senator Berger, because in 23 years of teaching history and government, this is one of the most incredible, powerful, primary source documents I've ever encountered. Dear Senator Berger, I'm not sure why you feel like writing me would be using me as a political pawn based on some letter I might have received from Governor Cooper, but I can assure you that I won't be, nor will my fellow Commissioners be used as a pawn by anyone. We frequently get mail from different government agencies and on occasion from the Governor's office as well. I'm going to assume that the subject matter you refer to is Graham County's support of our Representative Kevin Corbin's effort to pass legislation to expand Medicaid. The Board of Commissioners from Graham County offered our support to Representative Corbin and his effort to do just that, nothing more. We feel it is past due to expand Medicaid in our state. Here in Graham County, Senator, we are accustomed to being ignored, not only by the Governor, but by the Legislature as well. We're a very rural county that has a small taxable amount of property that's trying to survive in the 21st century and provide the necessary services to our citizens. What we've grown to expect from our Legislature is declining state funding and increased local funding to any particular social program. We support Medicaid expansion because our citizens need it. Did you know, Senator, that our poverty level is near 30%? It's 20% in Macon County. Do you know that we have several hundred working adults with no means to have healthcare? You might be surprised to learn that our five-member Board of Commissioners is made up of four Republicans and one Democrat. We don't have the luxury of doing things based on some national political party stance of some issue. The people we serve are our friends. Were you to come visit us, Senator, I could show you some working moms and dads at fast food restaurants, or construction workers, or other gainfully employed citizens who don't have health insurance, they can't afford it. Graham County Government provides coverage to all of our employees, and that costs the taxpayers over $700 per employee per month. That's a group price. For an individual to get comparable coverage outside a group, that would cost almost double. We don't have the best health insurance either, we have high deductibles. A lot of our employees never meet the deductible during the calendar year. In closing, Senator, while some politicians like to operate as a one-size-fits-all, that approach doesn't fit rural North Carolina. I can show you the same problems we have in every western county, Graham just happens to be the poorest of these western counties. And finally, you know, Senator Berger, for some people who have good-paying jobs and good health insurance, it's easy to say that those without health insurance just need to go to work, isn't it? The reality is, is in places like Graham County, those people are working. A mom or dad working at McDonald's or Wendy's for just over minimum wage cannot afford $1,500 a month for insurance. Representative Corbin's bill was a good effort to correct that, I'm sorry you don't agree. Sincerely, Dale Wiggins, Chairman, Graham County Board of Commissioners. So, I will hand you that back and forth, I know you're not in the position to vote on this tonight, but I will hand you that back and forth between Chairman Wiggins and Senator Berger, as well as a, a model for a, um, a resolution for this board to support Medicaid expansion in North Carolina. I thank you all very much.
Thank you, John. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Tate and Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak this evening. This is a very important issue I wanna talk about. I'm here to speak about mandatory child abuse reporting and retaliation. You may not know, or you may know, there were 120,000 children involved in CPS reports in fiscal year 2017 to 2018 in North Carolina. In 2016, 27 children died in North Carolina from child abuse at the hands of their caregiver or parent. North Carolina law mandates that any adult who has cause to suspect abuse or neglect must report their concerns to DSS. If you don't, it's a Class 1 misdemeanor, so it's very serious. I'm a licensed clinical social worker with 20 years of experienced training expertise in child abuse reporting. In July, unfortunately, I had to report a neighbor for child endangerment. His three-year-old son was operating a motorized car in the roadway unsupervised. The child was nearly hit twice on two separate occasions by oncoming cars. If you don't think this is dangerous, here are some statistics. Accidental deaths comprise the largest cause of death to children in North Carolina. In 2016, there were 115 deaths certified as accidental involving vehicles. There were 29 child deaths outside vehicles or other vehicle-related crashes, including pedestrian accidents, go-karts, mopeds, and ATV-related. There were an additional 27 child deaths involving child drivers. Seven of these were children under 15 years of age. As a professional, I do not take a report lightly. I consulted with two people before making this report, I also consulted with DSS. It was their decision to investigate. After the report, the neighbor drove his car towards me twice, once at high speed, flipped me off, engaged me in a confrontational verbal interchange about the DSS report, came to my residence and sat outside my door. I told him to stop verbally, and when he didn't, I gave him a written notice. The neighbor didn't stop, he retaliated. He went to court to get a 50C saying that DSS worker, Paul Timmon, advised him to talk to me after I had made the report. This is against DSS policy, and if it's true, Mr. Timmon would have violated the policy, and if it's false, the neighbor lied to District Court Judge, Justice Richard K. Walker. None of my conduct was unlawful. More importantly, though, this is why people do not want to report, retaliation. North Carolina took a step in the right direction last month when Governor Cooper signed SB 199 into law, expanding the duty to report child abuse, which now includes, uh, Class 1 misdemeanor if you try to prevent somebody from reporting. This is not enough, however. We must go further to protect legally mandated reporters from retaliation. So, I'm asking you, the Commissioners, to support the effort to move in this direction. I know you don't pass those laws, but, you know, in lobbying the Legislature, um, to make retaliation a Class 1 misdemeanor. I'm asking you also to do a little bit of investigation and find out if Mr. Timmon actually did advise this person, whom I've already given you the name, I won't do it publicly here tonight, um, to talk to me against department policy. I highly doubt that's true. Um, and if you find out it isn't true, refer the matter to the District Attorney for an investigation of perjury. You know, this child deserves to grow up, to have friends, to be healthy, to go to high school, go on to college, and maybe one day become a Commissioner. But this isn't gonna happen if we don't protect mandated reporters. Children are gonna continue to die and be abused, and people are gonna look the other way. I can't look the other way because it's my civic duty not to, but as a social worker, I just refuse to. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Did you contact Mr. Bettencourt at DSS? The Director?
The Director, no, I didn't. I tried to go to the Supervisor, but she called me back, but it was late on Friday, so I couldn't get back to her, so.
If it's liaison to that department, if you'll leave me some information, we'll have Mr. Bettencourt be a part of it.
Okay, excellent, thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to address the board under public comment? Going once, going twice?
Closed.
All right, um, additions to agenda? Mr. Manager, anything?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if I could, um, if we could move under old business, we need to, or actually, we need to move this under new business. We'll add, uh, Jack Morgan, item number 11F, and he has a, he's gonna bring before us, we need to release a bond that we have on the Ingles, uh, the Ingles Project. Do you wanna do that under old one, or, um, I don't?
It's new business.
It'll be new.
It's not been back before this board yet.
Right, so we'll need to, to release that bond on the project, and Jack is here tonight, so he will be discussing that. Again, that'll be item number 11F. If we could also, we need to add, um, under old business, item 10C, we're gonna get an update from County Attorney Jones regarding the temporary access road, or temporary permission to construct the temporary access road that we have given Main Spring on that property. We went out and performed onsite investigation, just have a few things we need to make you all aware of prior to moving forward with that. That'll be item number 10C, again, under old business, and it'll be an update on the temporary access road for Main Spring. And then if we could, uh, also from the consent agenda, we need to move item number 12B, rejection of bid request number 4310, in-car system and body cameras, under old business, item number 10D. We discussed it last meeting, but we just never formally made the motion and seconded to do that. Strictly a housekeeping matter, need to put that under 11D. Again, we'll move that from the consent agenda, that's item 12B. And that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyone else? We get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Bill?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Higginson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, reports and presentations, item 9A, explanation of North Carolina Department of Transportation Population and Employment Growth Projections, which will be used to forecast traffic volumes. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak with y'all tonight. My name is Rose Bogus, I'm a transportation planner with the Southwestern Commission, and I provide transportation planning services for the six western counties of North Carolina. And I'm here to you tonight to talk to you about the Macon County Comprehensive Transportation Plan update. Specifically, we are looking for the Commissioners to endorse the population and employment growth projections for the future year. But, um, before I get into that, I just wanna give a brief overview of the Comprehensive Transportation Plan and what it is and where we are in the process. The Comprehensive Transportation Plan is a long-range, multimodal plan that lays out the county's vision for the future transportation system and identifies potential needs and where there's existing or future deficiencies in the network. Um, it does cover all modes, it's highways, bicycle facilities, sidewalks, um, aviation and rail, if you have it, and also public transportation. And it really looks into the future about where this, where the county is going to grow, how it's gonna grow, and where there may be needs. So, it provides kind of a framework for the local governments to work together with the transportation planners and the North Carolina Department of Transportation to lay out that vision for the growth. After a project gets funded, this kind of lays, lays the foundation for which projects are, are the highest priority to get funded and constructed, and then throughout that process, the transportation plan sort of lays out that vision for what the purpose and need of each project is and how they all eventually connect to develop that future vision. You kinda do one, one piece of it at a time, as funding allows, but eventually you're trying to build towards this future vision. The, the current transportation plan for Macon County was adopted in 2012 by this board and also the Town of Highlands and Town of Franklin and the Board of Transportation with NC DOT, and these plans are updated periodically to keep them current, to reflect the projects that have already been funded and either completed or are currently under construction. And so, the previous plan looked out to the year 2035, we're now updating this plan to the year 2045. So, even just in the last 10 years, a lot has changed on the transportation front. We weren't, the last, the last, um, process, we weren't looking at autonomous vehicles or drones or electric bicycles and bird scooters and all the, um, all the things that are coming online now. So, in an effort to keep this plan current, we're now updating it, and as part of the process, we look at how the counties grow and we look at your comprehensive plan that you've adopted, and also, we have to make some assumptions in long-range planning. So, looking at the population projections and the employment projections historically for about the past 25 years, it's shown an average annual growth rate of about 1.2%. Um, we've worked with the locally formed steering committee, and I have to give them a shout-out, they've done a great job, they're a wonderful steering committee and have given, been very engaged and getting, given us lots of good input. We've met seven times now, going back to March, um, and so we've had them look at these numbers, and we've had a lot of discussion about, um, the historical growth rate versus what they think's gonna happen in the future. Um, we've gone back and forth, some people thought, it feels a little slow right now, but they think it's gonna pick back up. Macon County's on the very critical transportation corridor between Asheville and Atlanta. We hear a lot of different demographic trends happening, obviously, we're aging, we're also seeing people move toward the urban areas, but then anecdotally, we know a lot of them are also trying to escape those urban areas and come to places like Macon County to start a business and raise a family, not just to retire. So, with all that, the steering committee recommended that the 1.2% annual, average annual growth rate to 2045 was reasonable, and, um, there was, they didn't have any reason to make it either higher or lower. But DOT wants to make sure that the board is aware of, of these recommendations and see if you have any additional information to add, um, if there's any major development coming or major exodus of Macon County planned that would, that would drastically change that. Of course, there, these are rough assumptions, um, but they would like the, the board to endorse that 1.2% growth rate or offer any additional information, if you have it. On the employment side, historically, the ratio between employment, employed population and total population has been about 0.42 on average, fluctuates between about 0.46 and 0.40. Again, the steering committee felt like that was a reasonable assumption going forward to keep that same ratio as, has been since 1990 on average. So, um, I have a memo kinda outlining this and a chart on the back with the actual historical population and the protected population, um, and a little bit about the methodology. This growth rate amounts to about, uh, 427 additional persons added to the population each year on average. So, just like to ask the board if that seems like a reasonable assumption, because this, these figures will be used as a basis for calculating the future traffic volumes for the base of the plan. So, we want y'all to, to kinda know the assumptions that are going into it, make sure it seems reasonable, and also remind you that we'll be coming back around to you next, sometime next year, probably late spring, early summer, for adoption of this plan. We'll also have a series of public workshops leading up to that before the adoption to present the draft band, the draft plan and get public input. Um, we had a public survey out this summer from May to July, hopefully everyone got a chance to take that. We got over 650 responses from the public, which is a really good turnout, we got a lot of great comments and results from that survey, and, um, we will be putting all those results up on my website, which is in a, um, have links in another document for more background information, but, um, that one page memo for tonight is all that I needed your input on.
Thank you, Rose. I'm comfortable. Everybody else?
The only thing that we've had many discussions about, you know, I mean, Rose, is the volume of traffic we have now. And, and that's happened in all western counties, that the volume of traffic, and usually in November, you know, but we didn't, we didn't see it much, we slowed down this year, we're not gonna see it again this year. So, the only thing that we question is with the census coming up, and that's what this is really based on, at the end of the day. So, uh, but those of us who live here and drive up the Georgia road at once in a while, especially on Friday evenings, it's just, if you'd ever told a lot of us in this room what it would be, we'd say, hey, that'll never happen. So, the only thing, I mean, 1.5 sounds like a lot overall, but I think at the end of the day, especially those, it'd be in a corridor now from Atlanta, uh, that we're gonna have to, we would like to see ours, you know, we, 'cause I beat this drum as you know, Rose. Uh, the point system and, and, uh, but I think this is important, so 1.5, Mr. Chairman, I think is a great start, but as we update, as we go along, this is not edge in stone.
That's right. And I didn't, I don't wanna get into too much detail, but also the historical traffic counts are also used, this, this whole methodology is kind of a little bit art, a little bit science. They look at the individual traffic counts. They look at the individual traffic counts, historically, as far back as they have data, on every single road as well. So they look at how much it's grown, and then they look at where, which areas are likely to see more growth, like the 441-23 corridor will definitely be given the highest rate of growth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you do? Do that as a motion, Chester, or just a nod ahead's okay? To endorse this?
Yeah, I think they would like some affirmative action taken with this, so.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make the, what do you got, Chris?
I was just going to get her to state for the record, so we can have it, the growth rate percentage, as well as the employment number, again, that we're endorsing.
Okay. So the average annual growth rate of 1.2% for general population, and then an employment-to-population ratio of 0.42.
Thank you.
Do you have an extra copy of this?
I do.
Could you get it to our superintendent right behind you, Dr. Baldwin?
Thank you.
All right. We got a motion.
So as liaison to the meetings that were shown, I make the motion, Mr. Chairman, to update the Macon County Comprehensive Transportation Plan, population and employment projections, as outlined.
Right. There's a motion by Commissioner Bill?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Rose.
Thank you very much. And here's an additional handout for your reading that you enjoyed, the Moore's mission on the.
Bill's right on that.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Old Business, presentation of space needs analysis, Mr. Dan Mace, Mosley Architects. Welcome, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, as they're coming up, I'd like to say that it's been a pleasure working with Dan and his team throughout this process. I think what you'll find, Dan, to present here tonight is a thorough analysis of our county buildings and the space needs of our future. Again, what these gentlemen will be giving us tonight, I'd like to reiterate their recommendations. Nothing set in stone. This is a playbook, if you will, for our future space needs, and some options and alternatives that they've identified. It still remains up to you which plays out of that book you're going to call. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Dan, and Dan, it's a pleasure to have you here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'd like to introduce my associate, Brian Payne, he's our project manager on this study. And on behalf of Mosley Architects, we appreciate the opportunity to serve Macon County for this facilities study we've been working on pretty much an entire year, I think. It's taken quite a while. What our objectives were when we began the study was to look over a 20-year projection, not only identify what your current needs are, what you may be lacking right now, but project those out in five-year increments over the study period. Anything after 15, 20 years, the crystal ball gets very foggy. So we found that, you know, coming up with a 20-year projection, we take past trends and project them forward in various models to project the county's needs going forward. And I appreciate your leadership in taking charge and doing this type of study, so that your growth can be accommodated with wise planning versus just kind of addressing each emergency as it comes up. So it's good that you're getting this in all in one spot, so you can plan accordingly. So what we wanted to do was project your future space needs based on your operations, your population projections for the county, and your changing operational trends we see in, for counties, and their services to your taxpayers. We want to also assess the condition and usability of your existing facilities. To that end, we had our engineers, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and structural engineers come in and walk the facilities, make observations based upon life cycle cost, whether you might be five years or 15 years out, changing out your mechanical systems, that sort of thing, and to assess whether it's recommended to replace, or repair, and renovate, and add on for each facility that we looked at. And we're going to, and we developed options based upon those observations. And of course, we then provided cost estimates on where we think those needs are in today's Our methodology was to meet with your stakeholders extensively. We met with all of my primary representatives from each department for county facilities and county operations to identify priorities and address needs. We met extensively with personal one-on-one interviews to do a deep dive on those operations. Not every county's the same, every county operates differently, and this has been no exception. We really appreciate a lot of people's time and effort that invested with us, so we could fully understand your needs here. We also wanted to create a program from those interviews, a program document. Now, for us architects, a program document is a bunch of numbers, with spaces and relationships, you know, this number of spaces, and this size, and this capacity. And that gives us a kind of a guideline by which to then look at what you have and find out the best places for those needs. This is kind of a summary of what we saw, when we looked at all the different departments within the county. And just in general, we found that your needs right now, and our projected needs, you're about a 20%, 25% deficit on spaces, or square footage that you would need to address these operations as the county continues to grow. And this is a list of the buildings that we assessed. You can see it's quite a list there, pretty much everything. And again, as I said, this included visits by our engineering team, looking at these buildings and the condition of those buildings, and making recommendations based upon their professional observations. Some priorities we identified for the future. One was building condition, operational need, and departmental growth. Some of the questions we asked, are the mechanical, electrical systems safe? Are there structural failures, or potential failures present? Is the cost of maintenance too great for the county to make sense for that particular facility? Operational needs, is a current building secure? Is it up to current code? Is it accessible for all the people that would visit the facility? Or privacy needs properly addressed? And then growth, how much additional square footage to accommodate the growth of each department over the next two decades? These are just some miscellaneous photos of our observations. You can see, a lot of facilities are, you know, you're really maximized in terms of trying to accommodate your operational growth and the stress of those operations. And I'll just kind of show you a few things. Some of these are accessible things, deficiencies that we noted. And departmental growth. So what we identified was, you know, out of the list of needs, we have identified some priorities, and Brian will kind of cover those with you right now.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, thank you, Commissioners. So the first priority that we identified was, and what we're recommending is construction of a new justice center complex. We found needs in both the existing courthouse and the existing detention center, as well as the sheriff's department in their current facility as well. We propose this facility be co-located, so all these functions can happen in the same facility, and they can be, that can streamline their process and their operational procedures. It would also give them room to expand these departments in the future. Though the justice complex could be built in phases, depending on the priorities that you guys deem necessary. One of the things we were proposing was a courthouse that would free up room in this building for other departments in the county to expand in this building. Another priority would be expansion of the detention center on that site, and then the third would be also to co-locate the sheriff's office on that same site as well. As I just made mention, another priority we recommend is a major renovation of this building, the SEC Annex Building, and the courthouse Annex Building, these three complexes right here in downtown. If the, if a new courthouse were built, and the courthouse functions were to be removed from this building to a new building, that would free up a lot of square footage in this building, roughly 40-some thousand square feet, for multiple departments within the county to be relocated here, and to have that future growth and expansion needs that each department would need in the future. And then that page, that page and this page are just kind of showing schematic concepts of what could happen on each of those floors for those departments. Another project priority that we came to realize might be a good idea would be the existing National Guard Armory Building. One function that we thought might fit well in that building would be the county's housing department. They have a lot of storage needs, they're in a very old facility, old piece of property. If those folks could be relocated to the National Guard facility, that property could be sold. The other thing that we thought about is maybe the SEC Community College component in the SEC Annex here could be relocated there. And that also gives a lot of potential expansion space for the future public safety center that SEC is planning for in the future. All that could be co-located in that facility. And then we've outlined a few other future projects that are maybe not as pressing as the three that I was making mention of earlier. Those three being a renovation of the Department of Health and Human Services building. One thing that if we could renovate that building, we could relocate the dental clinic, which is now in a leased space, get the county out of that leased space, and move that dental clinic back into the DHHS building. Another potential future project that you could consider would be a new emergency management headquarters. Those folks are very cramped right now between the Hyatt Road facility and the Barrett Building. Pulling some of that function into a new headquarters could create you a new 911 facility that is up to date, meets the modern day codes, gives you plenty of room there to expand the headquarters function of the EMS. Another future project to keep in mind and target would be a potential future renovation at the senior services center. Most of those issues at that facility are like accessibility and parking issues, most of that could be handled with a minor renovation at this point. But I think that is a future project that you could consider. And another project there that you could consider would be the Nanahala Community Center and Library. The library facility there that's currently there is rather small, it's a little bit antiquated, and building a co-located community center, library could allow the county's services to expand into that community a little more than they currently are.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian. One of the things I meant to mention to you earlier is, in terms of the need for the justice center, you know, of course, you're aware, your jail currently is, of course, aging out. I always say jail facilities age in dog years, because they never close, and the occupants are trying to tear it up, and use pieces of it to hurt people with. So they really take a lot of abuse. There's no other county building that takes the kind of abuse that a detention center does. You've been steadily overcrowded. Your rated capacity is right at 75. Your average daily population in 2018 was around 105. So there's rated capacity, and I will tell you how critical this is, there's rated capacity, and then there's safe operational capacity. Operational capacity by the National Institute of Corrections is roughly about 80% of your rated capacity. That's what operational capacity means, is that's where you can typically safely operate a detention facility for classification purposes. You know, just because you have a bed, for instance, in a female unit, doesn't mean you can put a male there. So there's a certain percentage that you really are full when you're 80% of your rated capacity, which is right around 57. So you can see, your average daily population is well over that, almost times two, right now. So this will continue to get worse. I think I was talking with the sheriff, you're averaging about 20, 25 inmates outside at $50 a day, that's about half a million a year. If you were to really put your jail into safe operational mode, you'd be twice that, close to a million a year to other counties to house your inmates. So that is a critical issue, I just wanted to reinforce that. Plus, you know, the reason we kind of prioritized the justice concept was that if you don't have the courtrooms and the space to safely adjudicate those in jail, your population's going to continue to rise in your jail. So you've got to look at this as a whole process, a whole judicial process that needs to move, and move efficiently. So I wanted to reinforce that. So now, cost, the sheriff says he's going to have my back, so here's where the numbers are. Yeah, I just looked back there and he's gone, so. He didn't give me any weaponry. So what we're looking at right now is where we think the costs are on a 12-month from-now projection. You know, after that, we have seen cost, as you're aware, cost of construction has been escalating at a high rate over the last couple of years. This year, we're seeing anywhere from 10% to 15% increase, just in this year, in 2019. So, you know, the numbers that you see that we'll share with you are, you know, we feel very conservative numbers, that just for planning at this early planning stage, you need to budget for. They do include things like fixtures, furnishings, and equipment, you know, miscellaneous costs, and it has some built-in escalation for 12-month horizon. These project numbers, as you move them out into further years, we recommend you place about 5% to 10% escalation factor on those, so you can budget those whenever you decide it's time for the county to move ahead with those capital needs. So the first one is the new justice center. We've identified three phases. Phase one and phase two may occur simultaneously, or they could switch. You could build the jail first, or the courthouse first, or build them all. But the costs are for, the courthouse is right around 30.9 million, the detention center 37.5, and the sheriff's office component 8.9. The desire to have the sheriff's office co-located with all of that for obvious reasons, you can decrease staffing cost of your detention center, you create some efficiencies there if you have all of that in one place. Obviously, having a physical connectivity to the courthouse means you do not have to transport inmates to and from court, which is, again, a staffing inefficiency. Yes, sir?
We got a group of young people here, you need to listen to this. You're going to be here, you're going to be here. And the money he's talking about now is going to come out of your pocket. And you need to focus on what this county is moving towards, millions of dollars that's involved in it. But you will be here, you'll be part of this leadership in Macon County. Don't nod off. I'll get you. But listen to this, this is you. I'll be dead and gone, but this is you, when you're talking about millions and millions of dollars, these from the high school here, these kids are. Thank you.
And you assume responsibility for these gentlemen up here to have to make these tough decisions, because, you know, we'd rather everybody behave and not have to need a justice system. But our experience has been that, along with growth, you have the other part, that it is a mandate upon you to keep your citizens safe and secure, and have a...
I know we get deeper into weeds, but now, when you say that, was this adding on to our existing facility, or remodeling our existing facility? When you say detention center at 37 and a half million, is that using the existing facility and doing a renovation of this building and you?
No, sir, that's a replacement. Your current facility, you know, there's things like the core, like your kitchen, you know, your property storage, your intake booking, to accommodate the size facility, we recommended that you plan for about a 240-bed facility versus a 75. It just cannot accommodate an operation of that size without a full replacement. We do have some recommendations of what you can do with that facility, so it's not, you just don't bulldoze it. But right now, these numbers I'm covering are replacement, a replacement model.
I'd like to add too, Dan, you know, these numbers, when you look at them, they definitely jump out at the page, I mean...
I mean, they're high, but when you look at this and, and compare that, as we've said all along, we're going to use this as a tool to further prioritize our capital improvement plan, which you'll recall we received about a year and a half ago. And, you know, in that capital improvement plan, there were things like, you know, the Health Department had, had requested expanding, expanding the Health Clinic and the Dental Clinic, and that had, that was involved construction of new buildings. I think DSS had recommended a administr, administration building that, that, that was eight, had about an eight million dollar price tag on it. And when you start adding that up, the CIP totaled a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of identified projects. But as Dan said, and, and as you can, as you'll see better when you get the actual hard copy report, in constr, in this phased construction, what you're doing is you're cutting in half that CIP list. Those things are coming off because your, your departments that, that move over to the courthouse will now, Health Department can expand at the Health Department, they'll have that room for expansion over there. So, while this is high, keep in mind that some of the, those projects that were identified individually by departments, this enables us to accomplish those projects without having to build new buildings, so it's lowering that CIP total number the whole time. And, and as Dan has mentioned, your revenue offsets, like not having to, to, to ship inmates out of county, those revenues go into, toward paying for this stuff too. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of efficiencies gained that, that are not, that, that if you just focus on that number, you know, it, it's a lot different when you look at it, look at the whole picture. So, and we'll be getting into that more in our budget discussions.
Right. A lot of counties too, our, our recommendations on the, the number of beds is not just what you will need when you, the day you open. We don't want to be back to being overcrowded again the day you open, so it has beds that the county, that you will need over its, its lifespan. But, you'll be able to, you know, potentially offer those beds to other counties needing beds, and, and some of those capital costs can, can offset some of your operational of the new facility, so.
How was the jail, Sheriff?
Twenty years old.
See, twenty years ago, when they were building the new jail, that was a huge uproar. We'll never need this big jail, how much of a waste of money it is, and we, some of us remember those days. And, that's, in the last five years, I don't know how much we spent, send, we can go back and get that number, but it's in the millions, Sheriff, to send them to another location. So, it don't surprise me at all what we need.
Right.
We've actually had to look at shipping our inmates to Mecklenburg County because all the jails in western North, North Carolina are full, and so we've had to contact Mecklenburg County, who has a new facility and, and in fact, a facility that's not all the way open because they don't have the manpower to fill those positions. But, we've actually, I've had to call the county manager to let him know that we're looking at Mecklenburg County.
So, every, every county's dealing with this situation, and, and again, the, the purpose of this was to identify them, and, and then you guys have the, the tough choice of, of what to prioritize and move ahead with. I, I, I was telling Derek, I'll be happy to come back in a more detailed work session with the commissioners, to really do a deep dive into what you'll see as a rather large document we're going to prepare for you with the final study, and, and kind of go through this rather than, you know, the overview we're giving you tonight, so.
And that'll be our budget work session in-
Be happy to come back then. Another, a, a, a cost was to renovate here, once the, the justice facility is, you know, obviously that requires that to be up and, and operational before you can get in here and renovate and move county functions here. The Annex Buildings, again, twenty-one point six is the total project budget, of which would be the existing courthouse at seventeen point three, the Annex at two point three, and the SCC, the Community College Annex at two million. So, that's how that's dispersed amongst those needs. The renovation, as Brian mentioned, of the National Guard Armory, we've allocated four million for that. The renovation of the DHHS Building, seven point six million. New Emergency Management Headquarters at eleven point three. Renovate the Senior Services Center at four point one, and the, the new Library in Nanahala Community Center at four point one. In summary, we'll follow this presentation we're giving you tonight with a, a solid written document with all the backup information in it, and all the projections that we've done, the program documents, the, you know, enlarged schematic plans that we've, that we've created. And, and then, of course, it will accommodate all the building assessments, all those detailed assessments of our observations with your, your building systems, space planning programs and other supporting documentation. You know, we understand that you can't do this all in one, one hit, so, you know, we hope that this document that you'll have will be a working one. We don't want to do bookends that collect dust in the corner. We want it to be a working document that will change and will be addressed, and hopefully it'll serve you as a good guide as you move forward addressing these capital needs for Macon County. Yes, sir?
I didn't see a new high school.
We, we did not look at K-12.
Okay.
We did not look at K-12 needs at all. So, this was purely from the county facility needs, so.
Thank you. Any further questions?
So, when will we get the written report?
Probably next week.
Yeah, I think it's, we just need to compile it and, and get your PDF.
So, that, and in January, we're going to have, we'll come back, be with us in January.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that way, you've had some time to absorb that document. It's going to be a big one, so.
And, you know, the, the numbers are assuming on these renovations, assuming complete renovations, major renovations, we may or may not need all that. I think the value in this document, not only does it identify these priorities, they identify our, our mechanical systems, electric plumbing systems, and give us an inventory of what we got in each building. So, right out of the gate, this is a tool for our maintenance staff, and I think more importantly, it is a tool for this board that we can go back in and, and as we're looking at capital needs, be able to, be able to plan, and because they've been identified, we now have something that, that has put these things on the radar, and, and we'll be able to make informed decisions, as Dan said, prior to moving forward with capital projects.
And these would be, as I'm, you know, I wanted to repeat, that these would be numbers that the county would work within. So, we don't want to have to come back to, to you as a board and say, oh, we needed, we missed the budget, we need an extra two or three million dollars for this need. So, these, typically, these numbers for new construction have about a fifteen percent contingency plugged into them. For renovations, probably a twenty percent contingency. So, we would anticipate not spending that. So, we, again, we wanted to give you conservative numbers, that give you a budget idea of the scope and magnitude of the project. These numbers we would expect to work within, were the project actually to matriculate into a detailed design and construction effort, so.
Let me ask you a question, we have the Senior Citizen Center. Did you take in consideration the growth that's happening there? Did you look at where the growth was now, and where it's been over a period of the last two years, and where we project that growth is going to be at the Senior Citizen Center?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that was part of-
I think you said a small renovation. I'd like to hear a little more about that.
That's what we're proposing, that's what we're proposing now to address the current needs, most-
But not future needs?
Well, I think the facility that's there could probably handle the, the additional growth that that program is, will have, but I think the immediate needs of the facility would be more like accessibility issues and parking issues, those, those type of, that's the more pressing need there, at the, at the present time.
Well, I'll be grayer and grayer here, though.
That's right, it is, it is a growth need. It is a-
Forty-eight percent, sixty-five were seventh in the state of sixty-five-year-olds and older. Your momma leaked that again.
Okay, so, let's say it again. And I think you'll see when you get the report, they, they've made recommendations in there on how to maximize how we do use that space. Things like the Resource Center in these recommendations would be moved completely out of the Senior Center, giving it more room. So, it would take all the, that office space out, the kitchen space downstairs, you know, out. So, so, you know, out, there's, there's some recom, there's some things they've done in here that I think that's why the deep dive is warranted and you can't really get into it and-
Right. With that particular facility, though, I think Brian hit on it, the real critical issue that had us scratching our heads was the parking. You already have a parking issue there, there's, there's little real estate around to improve that, so we discussed ways that we could have, have parking rides, shuttles, that sort of thing to help those seniors get to the facility and, and, and return to their cars. So, that's one of the, kind of the considerations we had there, so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Dan, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, item 10B, discussion concerning Macon County's desire to remain part of the federal negotiation class established there for opioid litigation, Mr. Chester James.
Gentlemen, I prepared a memo and sent that to each of you, telling you that we would need to make a decision on whether or not the county wanted to stay a part of a negotiation class, much like a class action case, but instead of there being an actual case, purely for negotiation standpoint, of this opioid litigation. There's a federal court in the state of Ohio that is overseeing all opioid litigation concerning counties and municipalities, and that same court has also decided and has basically allowed for a negotiation class to be established that would negotiate on behalf of all counties and all municipalities, basically within, within the entire United States. Now, in order to make sure everybody gets a chance to decide whether they want to be a part of that class or not, they had to issue a, a notice to each county and each municipality, basically saying, you're going to be a part of that negotiation class unless you take affirmative steps to basically take yourself out of that class. Now, several months back, I guess perhaps even a year or more back, we talked a little bit about whether or not the county was interested in pursuing opioid litigation, and at that particular point in time, I think the decision was made not to pursue that. We're now at a place where we, we don't have any choice but to make a decision. We must make a decision as to whether or not you're going to stay in this negotiation class, or if you're going to opt out of it, you have to make that decision as well. My best advice to you would be that if you intend to opt out, you really need to proceed immediately to looking at whether or not you want to pursue litigation. There, as you probably are aware, it was a very large jury verdict in the state of Oklahoma, something approaching, I believe it was around five hundred million, does that sound right, Ronnie? There was another case settled, two counties in the state of Ohio, just recently in the federal court system, a lot of money paid out, or to be paid out there. The judge that's overseeing this class negotiation and the, and the federal litigation has basically put the word out to the parties that the counties and municipalities are in need of this money, and is, I think, leaning on the parties to give serious consideration to bringing about a settlement. There've been some huge sums of money put out there for discussion. After talking at length with the county manager about this, be my opinion that the county should consider staying within this negotiation class unless it desires to, at this point in time, pursue litigation.
Yeah, I think we, I think we played it pretty well right before, Mr. Chairman, and waiting until we see what was going on. In our meeting in Wilmington, a lot of the other counties are faced with the same thing we did, you know, that now that they're getting some real judgments, which you have drug companies filing bankruptcy, right and left, so that's what you're seeing now. But, for some of them, they're suing them right through the bankruptcies, they're still getting paid. So, I think that, I think you're very, I think, Chester, you're right, that we, now's the time that we, we can't go, what are we going to do, go it alone? We can't do that, so.
Well, you know, I think you could hire somebody to, to take the case. I think there's a strong desire on the part of the court to see this thing resolved nationwide.
And this is the same, by the way, these attorneys are the same ones who's up at the tobacco settlement.
I, I don't know that, but I'll take your word on that.
They are.
They, I know you're, this state's attorney general is, is working on this. I've provided you with a copy of an article, and, and there, there's some real, there's been as much as fifty billion dollars put on the table already.
I don't believe it's going to cost us anything, right?
Well, take, if we won't come out of pocket, the attorneys would get paid out of the settlement that, that are handling that matter, for the negotiation class.
We don't have to provide money.
Motion?
Yeah, I, definitely, Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that, that we continue with the, with the class action being part of that, not going to go-
The negotiation class.
Yeah, and not want to go it alone now, now's not the time. We want to, we want to keep our name in, in the hat, just in case.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Bill. Segue by Commissioner Shields. All in favor? All right. Thank you, Chester. Item 10C, the temporary access road involving, involving Main Spring.
You know, gentlemen, maybe in this, this past month, or perhaps even the month before, Main Spring made a request for the temporary use of a, a road so that it could access its property that adjoins the county's over by the Macon Early College. At the time the original communication took place, I think Derek understood that the road that they were going to be using or improving followed an old roadbed, and it turns out, we went and looked at the property, and it, and it does not, in fact, follow an old roadbed. What they will be doing, if you'll hand it to each of you a, a copy of a plaque that Ben West did, and you'll see where Old Siler Road is located, that's right before the entrance to the SCC Satellite Campus. And you will see where he has drawn in on the Macon County property, a thirty-foot wide area, and Ben West has indicated, and, and I understand Main Spring has confirmed, that the proposed road that they would construct would be within that thirty-foot area. That is a, it's kind of a little dip area there where that road will go. Derek and I have looked at it, we don't see any problem with it going in there, but one thing that we did talk about was if they were going to, to put a temporary road in there, that they'd need to restore it back to basically the way it was when they found it. That's not going to really be possible here, nor would it be advisable to the county. In fact, I think the county would actually be benefited by having that road there. It would provide access to a part of this property that the county owns that otherwise doesn't really have as good of access to, so. And they had planned to, to construct that and have indicated the willingness to construct it according to Forest Service standards. So, with that in mind, we just wanted to bring you up today, make sure that, that none of you or the board as a whole had any problems with that, and would authorize Derek to sign a, a letter authorizing temporary use and the construction of that road within those standards. And, of course, keep the road there instead of closing it.
Sounds reasonable to me. Do you want to make a motion?
It's a benefit to us more than just-
It is, I think it will be. We're going to ask that a, that it be gated and the gate be kept there until you choose to open it, so.
Can we get a motion on that, please? Got a motion by Commissioner Gillespie to approve the temporary access road, segue by Commissioner Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your work on that, Chester. All right, we've removed from the consent agenda, item 12B, rejection of bid request number 4310 in car system and body cameras. We moved it to item 10D. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, we, again, as we discussed at the last meeting, the responding bid to, for their, to the request for anybody's camera systems did not conform to the bid specifications, therefore it needs to be rejected.
Okay, can we get a motion to reject the bids, please? A motion by Commissioner Gillespie, second by Commissioner Bill, all in favor? Aye. All right, moving on to new business. Item eleven A, discussion concerning Macon County's water resources. We've still got a lot to go tonight, and a lot of people are waiting, so I'm going to make this very, very quickly, and I'm going to bring this back up at a later time. But I think we just discussed tonight, and I'll use the gel as an example of how quickly time moves and how quickly we look in the rearview mirror and wish we'd have done things a little bit differently. I'm wondering if we as Macon County, I think one of our greatest assets in this county is our water resources. I know there's currently businesses that are shipping water out of our county by the truckloads and taking it to larger metropolitan areas. And I don't know, I just think it's something that's impetus of this board to think about, moving down the road of how do we want to handle that? Is it okay? Do we just give our resources? You look at some of the litigation going on with various states, especially in South Georgia right now, and Florida battling over water issues, and that's probably, again, one of our greatest assets. So how do we want to handle that moving forward? Is it something we want to try and protect? It's a resource that the taxpayers here look after. It's something that Mother Nature makes every day when it comes to our rivers, but as far as our aquifers and some of our underground water resources, it's currently leaving out here a great rate. And I've got a feeling it's going to do nothing but getting bigger, because I've already heard of another large facility that might be coming in to tap our water, because it's free. They're making a lot of money selling it in other places. So anyway, again, I just want everyone on this board pondering that, and let's bring it back up at a later date, maybe we have a little more time to discuss it. All right, moving on to item eleven B, Appalachian Growers lease expansion. Mr. Tommy Jenkins, welcome, Tommy.
Mister Chairman, member of the board. If you remember back in June of this year, we approved a lease for, you approved a lease for Appalachian Growers for a thousand foot, a thousand foot square foot unit in the Macon County Business Development Center. As with the old Fine Arts Center at the high school, the day they opened, they found out it was too small, if you remember that. So they're in need of a larger space. We do have Unit A available. That's approximately around seventy-six hundred square feet, and they would like to lease that from us as part of their business development plan. It would be for a one-year lease at eighteen hundred and forty dollars a month, renewable upon review for the next two years for a three-year program. I've got Steve Utey and Lori Lacy from Agriculture, or from Appalachian Growers. So if you have any questions about their business, they would be happy to answer those. County Attorney has a prepared rescission of the lease agreement on unit, the smaller unit, Chester, I can't remember which one. But in essence, we would be releasing them from that lease, and they would be beginning to lease the larger units.
Black Mike prepared a resolution and lease for the new space.
You're not kicking anybody out?
No, sir.
We get a motion to approve the rescission and the new lease agreement. Motion by Commissioner Higgins. Second by Commissioner Gillespie, all in favor? Aye. Thank y'all.
Congratulations on your business.
We did a new one?
We got asked just to rescind.
That was just the rescission.
I did both, and I asked for both in one.
Yeah, the resolution, the new lease, and the rescission agreement is what I understood.
Is one, yeah.
Good deal.
All right, item eleven C, proposed twenty twenty county holiday schedule. Mike Drucker?
Gentlemen, once again, we're simply following the Office of State Human Resources holiday schedule for twenty twenty. That helps us align with DSS and Health and all of the state folks that we have in this building.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Higgins, second by Commissioner Shields. We got one studying no holidays. Is that right?
Yep.
All of you neighbors think that I'm saying aye?
I think you're serious.
All right, item eleven D, presentation and funding request regarding international agriculture study trip to Denmark. Jenny Collins, FHS Agricultural Teacher, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Board, for allowing us to come tonight. I am Jenny Collins. I'm one of the agriculture teachers at the Franklin High School. I've been there for fourteen years now, so I'm very excited. And in my time of being there, I have advocated for agriculture in many different ways. First, by just allowing students to go to competitions by just locally with the county fair and trying to boost those numbers and to help those students to learn and gain that experience. And then to go forward and do competitions in a regional setting, and then to go to state. And then a few years later, we went on to national competition, which we just got back from, so it was awesome. And we continue to do that every year. And so my passion about five years ago was to keep building these students' experiences in agriculture and what they can do, not only in the country, but what else is going on in the world, because we're all interconnected. And I thought, gosh, it'd be awesome if we could go on a trip, an international trip, that they could actually see agriculture in other countries and what's going on, because we import and export all the time in our country, and what are other countries doing. And I investigated a different programs and different organizations, and there are some wonderful ones out there, but none were as focused on agriculture as I wanted to see. I want these students to become immersed in agriculture. That's what I do. I'm an advocate for that, and I want them to see the same thing. So we found a company based out of Seattle, Washington, called Experience International, and they are strictly agriculture. The person that owns it, Charlie Walkinshaw is his name, he is an ag educator. He was a teacher in the classroom for over fifteen years, his wife as well, and they've based that knowledge on building their program and what they have. So met with him, have talked with him, and talked to the students, current students and students that have just graduated from high school, about going to Denmark. That is our destination in April of twenty twenty on our spring break, to go over there for nine days to learn about Denmark agriculture. And what is significant about Denmark is we, as North Carolina, are second in the whole United States for swine production, and they are second in the world for hog exports. So it's pretty awesome to be able to see what we do in our state, and our students have been able to see that as we've traveled to the eastern part of North Carolina, and now they'll be able to see that while we go to Denmark. So we'll be staying there for nine days, and we will be staying, going to colleges, and we will be giving presentations, fifteen-minute or so presentations, about what we do here in western North Carolina. Not only our agriculture, but what our lifestyle is as a student, as a teacher, as a person that's in the community. And then we will also be staying on farms there as well, and just learning about their culture and what they do, and how we can help them and they can help us in return. So very exciting. So I come before you today with a wonderful, kind invitation and ask if you would be able to or would like to help us or sponsor us for our trip. I have put there on the agenda how much the cost is. It's twenty-two hundred dollars per student. And each student has been fundraising since we began this process in May, and we continue to fundraise still. And we just ask if you guys would like to help us out in this endeavor to be able to go overseas and to learn about their culture and their agriculture and be able to bring that back here to make our program even stronger. So do you guys have questions about?
What's your timeframe to have your monies up front?
We have to have all our money by the end of January.
End of January.
Mm-hmm.
How much is the Board of Education, FTR?
They will be helping, hopefully, with transportation of buses down there. That will hire a driver to help with that area. But because of an international trip, then by law, by liability, is not able to help sponsor our trip.
Our attorneys advise us that this should be a non-school-sponsored trip.
Yes.
Due to liability.
Yeah. So we're all doing this on our own. So everything that I do for it is after-school hours, on the evening hours, and so forth.
Where does the liability come in? Do they come to your work with in Seattle, Washington?
Yes, and then there's travel insurance that we also have as well, that they carry and help as we go overseas.
And how many kids are going?
We have fourteen students that'll be going, and then we have six chaperones that'll be going as well.
Great.
Amazing chaperones. Mr. Bill will be one of our chaperones.
Insurance? What is, how does that handle, how does that handle?
So. The company themselves, if something goes wrong overseas while we're over there, we have a travels insurance policy that we take out that helps to take care of any emergencies or problems that happen.
As part of the cost of these.
Yes. Yes, sir.
I think it's worth noting that we, at one point, we had an extremely strong FFA program back years ago when Ronnie Bill was a kid, a long time ago. And then we kind of went through a period where our program wasn't as good as it could be. Then we've been blessed with two young ladies, one that's been there how long?
Fourteen.
And she's twenty-two.
Exactly.
And another one that's been around since, for how long?
I started in '05, and Jenny came the year after.
She's twenty-four. So anyhow, I can't figure the math out. But they have done a fantastic job taking a program to another level. It's not the FFA that Ronnie and I went through, but it's, we're in a different time, and they've been able to adjust that program to the time that we're in. And I think, you know, hats off to y'all for doing that. I'm a former FFA student, and I think I can speak for the other ones up here. Thank you for that. This trip, we, I've been involved in these type trips through North Carolina Farm Bureau. And while, you know, the first thing that comes to mind is Denmark, why can't you just go to Millersville, Georgia? Well, you know, you can see all the potatoes you want down there. But what, it's proven fact, the statistics show that when you go on these type trips, the kids that are on these trips, substantially more of them end up staying in agriculture, because it's a life-changing event. I mean, there's fourteen going.
Yes.
How many have flown before?
Yeah, there's maybe two out of the whole fourteen that have flown.
Just getting there is going to be an adventure. So I think, I think, you know, it's imperative that we support this. I think that we have opportunity here to make an impact on these young students. And I just applaud you all for putting this together and being willing to do this.
And the majority of them are, I mean, are here tonight, so if you guys have a question that you want to ask them about, you know, why they signed up or why they're doing it, you know, please do so, because.
I think it'd be great for all of them to stand up and introduce yourself.
Okay. All right, what's our, what's our?
Maybe just a quick sentence about yourself.
Name and why?
Scotland.
No.
John.
Thank you.
I'm Dakota Collins. I'm Miss Collins's son.
I'm Danny Estes. I'm actually the sentinel for.
Oh, yeah, I'm also Chaplain.
I'm Branson Collins. I'm actually Miss Collins's son, too.
You boys admit that. That's awesome. Great.
Takes a lot, though.
I'm Riley Green, and I'm just an FFA student.
I'm Emily Bryson. I'm also an FFA student.
I'm Samantha Collins, and I'm Miss Collins's daughter.
I'm Emma Whitworth, and I'm an FFA member.
I'm Mary Prezen. I'm an FFA student.
I'm Alexis Gibson. I'm FFA secretary, sir. I'm related to.
You admit that.
I'm Michael Jones, and I'm an FFA student.
I'm David Neil, I'm the agriculture teacher at Franklin High School.
We appreciate you guys being here, and I can't overstate this to you. Agriculture is a continually changing business, and the look of agriculture today is certainly a lot different than it was when we were your age. We need you guys to engage in agriculture. That's, you're our future. You're the future of who will feed us. So I hope you do on this trip, enjoy it, take it in, and come back, and we want to hear about this trip.
What's the length of the?
Nine days.
So you leave here?
October ninth through eighteenth.
We leave after school, and then spring break will start that Friday. To the next Saturday, we'll be going.
You fly out of Atlanta?
Yes, sir.
Straight?
I don't know. We're trying to price. It looks like it may be cheaper to go from Atlanta to New York and then head on over to Copenhagen, New York.
So what do you all want to do? Just cover the balance from there through the fundraising? Or how do you want to do it?
Yes.
We're going to have to keep working, you know. I'll speak to some of this. I'm probably more familiar than most. We talked about this when we first went together, and I'm just so happy they asked me to go with them. And I look forward to going with all these kids. And I agree with Carl, it hits. I've not been out of the country much, but I've been out enough to know that when you go to a different place, you learn a lot. And you learn more there in eight or nine days than you learn in a flight room in a long, long time. Denmark is a very wealthy country, if you don't know that. They've took, far they have free healthcare. They've got, it's a different world. When you fly into Copenhagen, you'll find out that it's a different world. But, Mr. Chairman, here's what we have, and not to embarrass, none of these kids, they're all outstanding students, everyone, even Miss College kids. And, but we have some kids that are struggling to make this payment to go. That's just a fact. And so it's whatever the board would like to do, if you think it's a worthwhile program for these kids, not separate them from nobody else, but I think it'd be a good investment in the future. Anytime you invest in a child and to benefit them in whatever it is, agriculture or whatever, but there's some kids that are struggling to meet their demands, and that's just the way it is. So whatever, Jenny, if you have a suggestion, then.
Go ahead, Mr. Shields.
We're going to hear another side of this from Mr. Bishop that deals with athletics in a few minutes. So you've got academics and athletics here. In my opinion, you might want to wait till about December tenth, put closure on both of these things, because he can say the same thing. Building character and things for athletes and those type of things. Now, it's not important, but as a principal, former principal there, when you come down to have to make decisions between academics and athletics, it's a gray-headed deal. Dr. Baldwin knows that, and is a, it's a tough deal. And he can say some of the same things about his, the facilities that he's going to be, how it's going to advance the kids and stuff like that. So you're going to get in a pinch here, and the only thing I can do about the pinch is just say, we need to hear both sides of the story before we make it. Or if I was Mr. Bishop, I'd expect the same thing from you. I think that's a good point. One thing I would like to bring up is there might be some other groups that are waiting to see what this group is going to do in regards to funding this trip, to make some determinations about what those groups are going to do in regards to funding. Not denying what you're saying. He probably could say the same thing. Well, we'll deal with him when he gets there.
It's two different, I sort of disagree with you. It's two different things in a way. We're talking about a facility here.
Right.
And we're talking about that's going to be there for thirty years. A facility that's going to live for thirty years, that's a different story. These students in front of us tonight have one opportunity, have one chance to go and be life-changing. And you will see some of these students standing up here now, it's going to be life-changing for them. Whereas a facility is going to be just a facility for thirty years. Yes, is it going to benefit those, it's going to benefit them for thirty years. This is going to benefit these kids for nine days. It's going to be life-changing for some of them, I assure you. So I think that's the real difference that we're talking about here. And what Carl is saying is that if we can contribute a small amount to this trip, there's other people that will follow suit and do some contributions. And so that's the real, I mean, there's no, you've not seen a GoFundMe page for this trip or?
I tried to make one.
He didn't go to, but he gone. So.
Am I reading this right? We're, we need forty-four and we're at about twenty-six?
Yes.
Is that twenty-six pretty current?
Yes, it is. I updated all my numbers today.
So are we saying, will we be saying the policy as a board so that every school group that goes overseas in the future will be given a money? Because there's others, there's other school groups that I know a hundred percent are going overseas this year as well.
That's right.
So do you give them the same amount of money?
I think you have to be, I think you have to take each one as they are, each one individually. I think, I think the linchpin is if you have some families who just cannot afford to send their child. Uh, I think, I think the linchpin is if you have some families who just cannot afford to send their child, but you...
What, just curiosity, when was the last time that FFA went on a trip outside the country?
Franklin High School, to my knowledge, has never been overseas or out of the country, to my knowledge.
I mean, we went to Raleigh, and I thought that was out of the country.
Well, a lot of our students do.
It was for him.
Right, um, Franklin FFA has never been, to my knowledge, and even I talked to the prophet or anybody else, has never been out of the...
And I, I'm, I think, one of the things I've understood from this, speaking to your point, is there, there are some other groups that, that, that go out of the country and go out of the country pretty routinely. They have a system in place, and it's able to, they're able to reason and do it. This is kind of a first-time deal, and, and I'm, I'm hopeful, based on conversations, that, that it's gonna be a reoccurring thing, but it's not really a reoccurring thing coming. So, I'm thinking, I'm hoping they're gonna get a system in place, much like some of the other, so...
So, but December, how much money you gonna have, how much you gonna...
We're unsure, we have two fundraisers going on right now, and then, um, that will probably be, except for like a Zaxby's night, you know, possible with like a restaurant night that we go and help, um, that will be all until, um, after Christmas.
And do you think, Jeannie, by December, you'll have a better handle on, on exactly how, how, you know...
Yes.
I need somebody to hit me with mine, too, so, and I use that to contradict, uh... But, but it, but I think by December, Jeannie, will you have a better...
Yes.
Better handle on everything and have a specific amount, then you know you're gonna have to have, you have to have this money to them by January?
End of January.
Of what?
January thirty-first.
December thirty-first?
January.
January's thirty-first?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you think of wait till then, or do you think to allocate some now, and then come back with, with the shortfall, or...
I mean, I think if we can allocate some tonight, it would be great, because I think it would benefit others in giving. And I know that for a fact.
Our original goal, as Concrep, as I was going, is to have, try to have all our group, our trip paid for by Christmas, and then continue to fundraise for spending money for incentives and like, help offset other, you know, funding that we needed for this trip and other stuff, like we had to pay for trial, other trial expenses, or... But we're gonna continue fundraising, you know, after we've made our money, we're gonna continue fundraising for this trip, even after the money's due.
The major chunk of it has to be in by the end of January, it's about, that's our plan. And then after that, um, we'll see, there's a, everything has to be paid to the company by the end of January period. So, if there's other spending money needs to come about, that, you know, individual fundraisers from there on.
What do you think, Jeannie, do you think it would be, uh, 'cause it will, you know, they, it'll be, uh, you'll get some PR here, uh, to benefit these kids. You wanna wait and come back in December, and maybe ask them for a specific amount, and let's not just guess at what we need? What do you think?
That's up to the, to the board, I mean...
Let me throw this out.
Okay.
We, they need forty-four, they're at twenty-six, too, that leaves a shortfall of seventeen, seven-thirty. I really feel like that what we do tonight is gonna impact some other part.
I agree.
If, if we did seventy-seven, thirty, that'll leave them ten thousand left to do.
I think that's fair.
I, I don't disagree at all, but I'm telling you, we, we need to be prepared to give it to every group moving forward. Just gonna be asking for it.
That's probably...
There's others coming.
We've never had a group come, well, in my term of view, and we give to other, uh, we give to this board, to other groups.
I, I agree with what you're saying, Jeannie, a hundred and ten percent. Um, I s- I see it. But we, this, this board makes a lot of great investments for the future of Macon County, but I can think of no investment any better than, than our kids. And, and I'll stand by that when the next group comes, say, Carl.
It's gonna be pretty quick on the next group.
Well, yeah, we'll give you a...
It'll be quick, it's gonna, it's gonna roll, you know.
You'll need to identify who received that payment. You're also gonna need to earmark this fund specifically for use only, for educational purpose.
Yeah, well, here's, Jeannie will have all that information.
Absolutely.
Here we go to the Experience International, and they're a five-on-one, C-three organization, so...
I heard somebody use the word educational purpose only?
Yes.
But now we're, so this is not involved, you know, I wanna make sure that's clear, because I know that Dr. Baldwin and I both have been, you know, emailed at the beginning of this, you know, it's not a school board trip, but these are students. So, I mean, keep that in mind, too, like, you are helping students that are doing this on their own. I mean, this is their own time and their own initiative, as well as families as well. And yes, I mean, they are students, too, so, I mean, just throwing that out there, too, that we're making sure that we're covering all our bases on that, so...
And even though it's not a school-sponsored trip...
Yes.
Does that prohibit the Board of Education from helping to fund it?
It's a liability issue with the, the funding from the school board, so...
If the money comes through the school board, then it is no longer a non-school-sponsored trip.
Correct.
So we can't use a school account, is that what you're, we can't use a school account, we've had to set up a separate account?
Yes.
We can, we can allow them to meet on school grounds, we can provide transportation to and from the airport, um, we can provide other avenues of support, um, that our attorneys will allow. But it can't, and no, once it becomes a school-sponsored trip, then we assume the liability for the trip, and that's the issue with our targets.
But a partial donation is not a sponsored trip, is it? I mean, I mean, I can understand if you fund it a hundred percent, that that's a school-sponsored trip, but if you make a donation like we're considering here, because we're both running forty-plus million-dollar budgets each year, you know? But if you just gave a partial donation from the Board of Education...
Traditionally, when we do trips as a group, um, the school board's role in any of our trips is to provide transportation, provide and pay for substitutes, and provide fuel. That's usually the role that they play in every trip that we take.
Yeah, that's, that's...
We do all the funding of our...
And that's usually, I mean, that's all we ever, that's really all we ever ask of them for any trips we traditionally take, um...
And that would be the position that we would, we would be in, I mean, FFA takes other field trips. And we, we provide certain levels of support there. But even when we take on those trips as a school-sponsored trip, we don't provide funding for that outside their fundraising efforts.
They don't.
We provide transportation...
And a substitute for pay.
But meals if needed, a lot of meals, the kids need meals, but on a standard basis, they do not provide funding for any of the trips we take.
But we can add that to our budget request next year.
Oh, no, you gotta this year, y'all.
We can, we do, not just...
So just, I just wanna make, I just wanna clear that up, because they traditionally do not provide any funding. We, even for our classroom trips, um, you know, we provide things like that, doesn't what they, standardly cover, the county covers on a standard basis.
Yeah, me too.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we take seventy-seven hundred and thirty dollars out of...
Continuancy.
Continuancy to fund this trip.
How much did you say again, Carl, seventy-seven, thirty?
I have a motion, my Commissioner Gillespie, to support an amount of seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. I have a second. I'll take the motion.
We have a session. Second, my Commissioner Higgin discussion, um, I am not gonna support this, not that I don't disagree with anything that any of these gentlemen said, but I think it's a, uh, an issue of fairness with our taxpayer dollars that we're spending. And I think if we're gonna do it for y'all, then we need to do it for everybody moving forward, so... If we, uh, this approves tonight, and we have other groups come next month or the following month, that the other groups know they're going overseas, which I'm sure is gonna happen, I just think we need to be prepared to, to do that as well, so... I think that, uh, personally, there oughta be some type of policy, uh, that this group, this board needs to set moving forward for not only us, but future boards as well, so... I'm sorry, I'm not, until we get something set, uh, set in stone, and then I'll, I'll be happy to support it. I don't think I don't stand behind y'all in this opportunity a hundred percent, 'cause I do. I think it will be life-changing for each and every one of you, and I hope that y'all get to go.
That's something we could, I agree that we need some sort of structure to any funds that we allocate. Is that something we could organize within the next thirty to forty-five days, to kinda alleviate some of the...
I would, I would think so, Paul, like I said, I just know that there's other groups going overseas as well, and I think once that they can catch wind of this, that they're gonna come with the same, the same reasoning, so I think we just gotta have to be prepared to support them. And as long as we all are, then, you know, then I think that's, that's a good thing, I just think we need to have...
Structure?
Some type of funding, other than...
No, I don't know, we've done this in the past, we didn't have it, we didn't have, beating the door down, killing, killing, killing. Most of those groups, uh, for a better word, a bit of a priority, for the expenses that entails that.
I, I, I don't, I think that's a horrible way to even consider looking at that.
Well, that's a fact, it's just the truth.
I don't think so at all, I think you look at each one of these kids individually as...
Well, I do, too, but I mean, it's just the fact that some of these groups that came before this one before and asked for money, uh, do better watch the amount. We've always found, found a way to help, e- any group that's come, but if it's been...
Yeah, and that's what I, I think you should help, any group that comes.
Yeah, and we do, and we have.
But I don't think we should judge.
We ain't judging, it's just the fact.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, any further discussion?
I just, I think I said I wish we'd have gone another month to put this package together a bit more of understanding. I know you're relying on other people making donations on what we do, uh... So, I don't think I can say in my mind, this is a, uh, an academic situation here. And Bobby talked, it's gonna be an athletic situation, and, and that's, uh, that's... And you're gonna have these, uh, the ath- other athletes gonna be coming through, too, so... How you treat this tonight is gonna be a record down the road, is what you're saying.
Oh, it is.
Yep.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
So that may be, so if you'll get very the information, Jeannie, um, have a, have a go through, have a go through Chris, right? Or we just send it directly to...
You just say that, I'll go to...
Okay, well, I'll pay for his food, all right. Boss hog gets to go.
All right.
Hope they got crab legs.
Presentation regarding, uh, funding assistance needed for Franklin High School athletic facilities.
Bobby Bishop.
If you can tell me, that'll be fine.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, um, I guess it was probably five years ago, I'm listening to y'all talk about that, I think it was about five years ago, I come to y'all, and y'all actually gave us twelve thousand dollars to, uh, take a, just an outdoor cage that we had, and enclose it, and do a lot of work to it. And since then, of course, they gave us the opportunity to do a GoFund, whatever that is, I don't understand all that, but to, to raise money to try to finish this backing cage, because it is become, you know, the winter months, it's really hard to have workouts, and we have done excellent. We, the building is ninety-five percent finished, um, has been insulated, has plywood on the walls, it's fixing to get painted, uh, has new heating and air conditioning system in it, so that in the winter months, that we can stay halfway warm in there where we're working out. And we're down to the point to where I need it open, so that we can start our workouts. We've bought new nets, we've bought other equipment, but basically, we have pretty much run out of money, and the only thing left is to buy the turf that goes down on the floor, which is gonna run a little over seven thousand dollars, I really think it's about seventy-three hundred and forty dollars or whatever, so I was asking for seventy-five hundred dollars to try to buy that turf, so that we can finish this cage, and not only for the teams now, but for future teams. So basically, with what y'all gave us before, and everything that we've raised, we've probably, even with the seventy, we'll probably have thirty-five thousand dollars or so in about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar building, because a lot of the other stuff I've had donated from people, uh, labor, material, time, it's completely wired, lights, we bought all those. Of course, we bought that out of the twelve thousand dollars that y'all gave us before, all the lighting, all that, so... That's basically where we're at, is, uh, we need the floor and put it down, and that's the only thing that we pretty much lack, and that's what the funding is for, is for the turf to go down on the floor.
Bobby, where is the build?
It is right between the softball field and the baseball field, on the outside, between the parking lot and where the soccer field is. Um, like I said, at one time, it was just a dirt floor with post-up and a roof on it, was all it was.
I've talked, Jimmy Schills talked about this at length, and he will tell you as liaison, uh, about this, and it is about the differences between this athletic, but you gotta look at what the community has done, and we've done it for other communities and, and these buildings, but, I mean, this is a good hundred and twenty-five or more than that, Bobby.
Yeah.
The building is, and they've done a tremendous job with what money they've had. Uh, he's went through the channels, uh, there's a pecking order that you're supposed to go through, and Mr. Baldwin and Mr. Biedler's here, uh, to see, you know, before, there was any avenues to get money, before we could make the county tax dollars, which, uh, and Bobby's done that, according to Mr. Baldwin and the athletic director at the high school. And so, I think it's a, it's a wise investment, it's a good investment, uh, it's gonna benefit kids for decades to come. And plus, you gotta remember, and, and like Jimmy will say, it really don't matter, but the girls' softball team has really, uh, been a shining star, uh, in athletics in Franklin High School. Uh, that's the only way you can put that, and, and we're proud of that, and they brought a lot of good generosity to our community. And that's not to say the other, other of them are not as much as important, but, uh, congratulate you, Bobby as a coach, and then that whole, and your whole team, uh, for what they've done. So I think it's a, I think it's an outstanding, um, you know, I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, it's just another example for the, where the county can really make a difference for decades to come, uh, this vote tonight, and, and help with this building, to give the facilities, and help, we've already been able to help the facility for a new football field, weight rooms, whatever we need, and so, I congratulate you, Bobby, and I'll certainly support your ideas.
And just to add a little bit to that, and I think the facilities has had a lot to do with that, is, I know last year we had three girls that signed to play ball, which, I know they're not gonna play ball their whole life, but if that helps them get their education, where they can come back to Macon County and help the county, I see where that's a win-win for everybody. And this coming year, I've got two seniors that more than likely, if they want to, can probably sign and go play somewhere, and in the following year, I've probably got four or five that can go sign and go play places, so... And the better facilities, it helps a whole lot, and a lot of the other teams that come here from other places, when they see what we've got, even though we're a little rural community, they really compliment on what our facilities are like, so...
Couple questions, uh, I know there's gonna ready to be some renovations there, are any of those renovations gonna affect this cage at all?
No, me and Jack talked a little bit about it today and stuff, that's kind of a totally different...
Is any other, uh, group use the building over there?
They have to come through me, the only ones that probably use it, other than the high school and middle scho-, we, middle school uses it, too, all of our softball, middle school, JVs, varsity. Some of the teams came to me last year, like, the All-Star teams went on days when it was raining, and asked me if they could go in there and hit and stuff, and all that's gonna do is help the program, or however you wanna say it, the Franklin Pro- And all that's gonna do is help the program, or however you wanna say it, the Franklin program, because all, I don't let, like, other teams from other places come. But if it's Franklin-oriented type things, then yes. A couple of the girls that went on to play, even do lessons in there and stuff, that are helping the girls that are here in Franklin. So, it depends on the situation, but yes, it is used more than just for us.
Question. Again, me and the liaison, you know, people seek out, and one of the questions that I had was the role of the Booster Club in your athletics area.
Uh, the Boosters Club has, I know it's been, and they have basically said, you know, they're not into building and doing stuff like that, but they did help me a tremendous amount last year. We had old uniforms. They bought our whole team all brand-new uniforms with shorts, sliding shorts, socks, everything. They bought me a bunch of new balls that I needed. So, they have supported us a lot. It's just that, for things to do with the building itself, they usually, what I've been told, that they just basically said they're not in the building business.
Okay. Another question I was gonna ask, and you may not know the total thing, but do athletic teams have a source of income, like through the budget?
There, there, there is a, yeah, there is a certain amount that gets put, I think, into your account. There's different accounts there, but that is basically to buy things like, to help buy balls and, uh, you know, if the bases tie up, I gotta go buy bases. If the home plate, we had to put a new home plate in last year, things like that. Things around the field are, you know, that's what that's used for, basically.
Maintenance issue.
Maintenance is used mostly, yeah.
The, when you start a project like this, I'm sure you develop a budget, kinda. And I believe I heard GoFundMe, how did that work out?
Well, I mean, it basically raised enough money to where the building was insulated with the spray foam insulation, which is very, pretty expensive, which, all these things were expensive, but everybody did help us and cut us. I mean, they didn't charge, they didn't charge us what they would've charged Ronnie to do it. Heating and air the same way. I know that Jennings gave us a good deal on the plywood. They cut as much as they could off on it. The paint, we bought the paint. It's the same way it got cut on it. The job corps is actually gonna come and paint it for us and not charge us any labor to do that. So, that's basically where you're at on those things.
Another question. Was the school, Franklin High School, or the school system a chain of command? Was that followed, um...
As far as I know.
Projects and stuff?
Uh, this was submitted as a fundraising request back in September, approved by the board.
Okay. Is, um, but it didn't make the capital outlay budget last year, did it?
No, it didn't.
Are, are these things, Bobby, I guess I'm asking you, can you foresee some of these things so we can get it in the capital outlay budget? And then they can prioritize it, or whatever it may be? I guess along with that, the other question was, how many more projects, be it volunteers, are taking place on a middle school campus and other school campuses?
I don't know nothing except about the softball. I don't know anything about the baseball, or the soccer, or any of those things. We're just trying to get the cage finished so that we can use it again, is basically what I'm shooting for.
Tulsa mentioned Kyle Barrington about the wrestling. Is that...
I've got it right here.
Something we need to talk about as part of this?
Yeah, I've got Kyle's. Kyle is sick, but you'll feel if he finishes with tackle. Can I take both of them at one time?
Well, I didn't know. I did. I don't know what it's about, so.
Well, this is about the wrestling program, and if you only read the, Kyle's sick today, and he couldn't be here, he would, but he did send me an email explaining about his request.
Okay, let me read it now, Mr. Chairman. Whatever y'all...
I mean, Bobby said you need seventy-five hundred dollars.
Correct. And that's, like I said, all that is...
If you down to seven thousand, you can make it work.
Will make it work. If you get it down to five thousand, I'll make it work.
I, it says, this is a...
If you tell me no, I'll make it work.
Wouldn't say that.
Wouldn't say that. This is from Kyle Barrington. If you don't know Kyle Barrington, he's a graduate of Franklin High School. Outstanding young man, Mr. Shields knows him well, as Dr. Baldwin and Mr. Breedlove. He is the new wrestling coach, and so Kyle came to, came to us and asked if we could help. But he's in a bind. There again, he did go to the Booster Club, and he went through the process. He says, "I took over varsity wrestling coach back in August. Knowing I had a tough climb ahead of me to give the youth of Macon County the type of program we've been lacking for a very long time. Some of the things we were meant, including adequate facilities to practice, the number of kids it takes to have a successful program, limited and outdated equipment, insufficient uniforms to fill all fourteen weight classes, and a wrestling camp that had ninety-three cents in it. The wrestling team finished with eight kids still involved last year. I truly believe that the state of the program was a major contributing factor after springing the fall, talking to kids and getting them interested. We now have twenty-seven kids committed to this program. This is a major step in the right direction. The athletic department has gone the other way to help me get through this program and move it in the right direction, but they also have thirty-one other programs to be responsible for. I'm asking for some help from the, from the county commissioners to help with the renovation facility large enough to aid in the growth of our program and upgrade the safety of our program. The money would go a long way toward getting us to a level playing field with surrounding programs and maintaining interest in wrestling for use. We have contacted the Macon County Fire Association concerning the rental of a building, number, it's letter A, building at the fire, to help where we can leave our equipment in place, have regularly practices, and not spend a lot of our time having to reestablish our wrestling mats, et cetera, for our program. Therefore, we, we ask on behalf of these, these kids and the wrestling program that the county would please support us in, with five thousand dollars to help us pay for our rent and balance of the money. Rent, by the way, is twenty, is gonna, is six months' rent, and we have to pay enough for their insurance to be there, Fire Board, speaking on behalf of the Fire Board too. So, most of this money would go, go for rentals, that they can have a place established where they could go and practice. Even with all the facilities here, it's hard, they can't get, where they can go. Wrestling is so much different, and I learned that while living in a building, wrestling. You need to have it set up and ready to go when you come to practice. It ain't like walking onto a bicycle ball court. There's work to be done to get ready to, to, for wrestling practice. So, that, Mr. Chairman, is why that we're interested, some of us are interested in trying to help Kyle, and if he's got thirty-one kids involved for a program like this. And first of all, if you don't know Kyle Barrington, he's just an outstanding young man. Think he's gonna be around, we hope he's around Franklin High School a long time. And Mr. Baldwin, if you got anything that I left out about that, since Kyle is not here, Mr. Breedlove, certainly speak to it.
I think Kyle pretty much explained it in his letter. The rest of the programs had a, has had a tough go of it for a lot of various reasons, and there's no doubt in my mind that he's one of the most outstanding young men we have in the county right now.
That's right.
Hate to lose him badly.
So, the school be entering this lease and just asking for funding? Would the school be entering that lease?
Well, the school would enter the lease for the fire grounds.
So, it'd just be providing funding for them to enter that lease?
That's right. He would be earmarked for that. This man would be earmarked for that through the, through the school and then...
But where's the liability coming in?
They have a liability.
We're simply, with the county, would just simply be providing funding to the school board to, to utilize for that purpose.
And any, that'd be another activity to understand it, Dr. Baldwin, that the school would be, would assume the liability, even though it's off-site from school campus.
Just providing tax dollars for any other school operation.
That's right.
At the end of the six months, is, is the, 'cause the rent's gonna be recurring, so, or...
What we're hoping that they'll see the rest of, what the hope is of Kyle, is that by the time that the season's over, that he will not have to ask for no more money. That, that would be, we would hope that they would have enough interest in the wrestling program with this many kids that they can, it'll be set, that, that he, and I think it will. I mean, I, I'm, I'm hopefully it will for, for not only for these kids, I mean, wrestling's the toughest sport out there. There's no doubt about that. So, if these kids can stick with it, and I think Kyle can be a wonderful influence on them, hopefully, they'll be, have avenues to raise money. That would be the goal. So, what you're looking at, Mr. Chairman, if, if you wanna fund both requests, you're basically looking at twelve thousand dollars. Seven of it going to the, finish the, the building, which is gonna be there for a long, long time, and the rest of it to give this wrestling team a place where they can, they can really practice and work at it. So, it's, I think both of them are legitimate requests. As far as I know, some of us have been involved in facilities for a long time for this company. And it's to having thirty-one children, thirty-one students in another sport, in my mind, is thirty-one children that will be out of trouble. That's what I look at, too. Anything else, Mr.?
That's it.
One last question. And I'm not asking you fun, I've probably, Dr. Baldwin, he probably heard more about this than I have, but the fundraising element that's going on in with our community is really stressful for a lot of people. And fundraising, I know we had a pause on this one time, but I couldn't live up to it either. If there's any way to exempt the teachers from being hit with fundraising, and I don't know how you get it, 'cause that, that's, that teacher makes that decision, but I know the teachers are continually hit by oranges, by this, everything that comes through in the fundraising. A teacher is hit, and John Deville was still here, I think he would say that that's a, that's an uncomfortable situation to be put into, when you gotta choose, I'm gonna buy oranges from you, I'm gonna buy cookies over here from you. But the fundraising piece within the school can be stressful, just like it is out here in the community. If everybody's going to, to Mr. Breedlove's bank, asking for that, he knows exactly what I'm talking about.
You got a case of blue piles off split, don't you?
I can't, I can't say.
I'll eat more blue piles than you'll allow, man.
But it's, it is stressful within the community when you have a lot of fundraising to them. I heard about the GoFundMe. I heard on the radio, and I was wondering how that went, if that's a...
Well, I mean, it's raised a bu, it raised a lot of money, and that's something where, you know, you just go on there. If you wanna do it, you do it, and if you don't, you don't have to, you know? There's really no, I don't feel like there's any pressure on anybody for that, 'cause it's just, if a business wants to give money, they do, or if an individual wants to, they do. But if they don't, you don't even know, I don't even know who's ready and who hadn't ready.
Right. But, but I think within the institution sometime, and I, I'm not just Franklin High School, it's any school that's doing fundraising, the teachers get captured real quick.
Every day. We probably average five a day at the office.
But now, just think about what that, what he just said. You got five a day at the office. What about a teacher getting hit with five? You know, that pocketbook's just, it's not just lavished with money. Not saying yours is either, but...
Told on you, Ronnie.
I can...
Well, Fluff was tore up.
But I'm just saying, if there's any way they can capture that a little bit and give the teacher a break or something, I don't, I don't...
That's up to him, but I don't know what we're...
And I don't know how to, how to say that, but it's just an emphasis point out there that within the community, when you run into businesses, they're just having to turn them down too.
Yes. Derek, I'm gonna ask, do we have any other facilities that wrestling teams could use, that's not being used right now? It's a good idea.
Their offices, I'm gonna figure it out. They don't need heat, that's for sure.
Like Ronnie said, with, with the setup and everything, you know, we, we definitely have facilities with open space, but not open space that could be dedicated, like they'd need to be dedicated to having things in there and, and set up.
I presume y'all don't either. Y'all would already give it to them.
So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that, out of contingency, by the way, do you don't have worry about how much is in contingency?
Yeah, we had ninety-six, seven thirty-nine, we did seventy-seven thirty, so we got about eighty-nine left.
We're halfway through, so with that, I would, I would make the motion that we contribute seven thousand dollars to the FHS softball construction of the practice facility to finish the floor. And we also contribute five thousand dollars to the FHS wrestling program to give them adequate practice facilities and to improve their ability to, to perform.
Commissioner, both of those, both of those funds go through the school board?
That's right.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bill.
So, it sounds like the softball project is capital outlay, 'cause it's continuing that batting cage project. And then the other, the five thousand, sounds more like operating?
It, it would...
I mean, it's not really capital.
It's definitely not.
I was just trying to think of how to set it up with the county budget. We'll just put it up at current expense, I guess.
They're saying it's at one time. They're saying it's seed, they're saying it's like a seed money type deal. It's gonna be a one-and-done, is what I'm hearing.
I'm just trying to figure out where the budget's setting up. We'll put five thousand in current expense, and then the seven thousand will go in capital outlay.
That's good, that's good.
But, but his situation's a one-and-done too, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
We have a motion, my Commissioner Bill. We have a second.
Say it. I voted for the first one.
Second, my Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion?
One comment. But I, I'm wholeheartedly supporting this, but I think you, you said something that, that we, we ought to respect and maybe give further consideration to, and that is, the capital portion of this really should've gone through the school board and through their prioritization.
I agree.
Process. I think you brought up a valid point there, and I...
Well, let's backtrack just a little bit. We knew when we set this up, though, it was gonna be a totally community-funded deal, right? Dr. Baldwin?
Pretty much.
I mean, it wasn't, wasn't even during our discussion, that was never brought up, because this building, when it originated from what it was, was gonna be a totally, that the county would, would help it when they could, if they could, and, but the rest, that was gonna be contributed by local businesses and local input. So, that's the reason it never really, we had that discussion, but it never really, it never really parlayed into, into what...
And something else for y'all's information too, that, that happened, was when we started enclosing the building, at that time, Mr. Rogers, which was the carpentry teacher, was able to take those kids up there, and that was a lot of the labor. They, they learned to do things with tools and put on siding and saw fit and stuff like that. And then, and this last time, after Mr. Barrington's took over the carpentry, they went up and they're the ones that put in some of the studs and put, nailed up all the plywood. So, it's things that, it's helping me, but it's also helping the carpentry class to be able to do projects that they wouldn't be able to do, so.
It is a capital asset, though.
Oh, yeah. For a long time.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, Jack, appreciate your patience.
All right.
Thank you. The Ingalls bond.
Simple little deal here, gentlemen.
Dr. Baldwin, they tell you about that little deer? They tell you about that little deer?
No.
I'll catch you later.
Well, let's take a break. Wait. Come here, Chris. Just come here.
You need to lick this grain feed.
This is where I'm aiming.
Don't think of it.
And Derek was...
He's been feeding, he's been going sick here, weekend feeding.
I just need permission to remove a bond, police bond.
Yeah, to release a bond. Got a motion, my Commissioner Glassby.
Say it.
Say goodbye, Commissioner Shields. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
I tried to put you under all this.
Ain't too sure about that visit.
Ain't too sure about that business.
He's been feeding it every weekend.
Them yellow acres are far from frozen beef.
Oh, yeah. Jake, you want to see this deer he killed?
Sure.
Jake, let's.
See, he's got that lawn out about.
They've been feeding it every weekend.
That'll bring you to their soul.
He didn't do it. He didn't do it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, everything's kosher.
That'd be my life.
Don't mount that one, you'll never mount.
Yeah, none of those protected amendments are out there. They're not really received or, you know, something carried forward.
All right.
Trump.
We've seen a gentleman. He had a few goats, so don't feel a thing.
That's why you're not.
I think, is that it? Jake wanted to know if I was there.
We've got the consent agenda.
Got a little, got a little bit more to go. We've got some appointments and consent agenda. Uh, can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda list? We've already had one item removed, eleven or twelve. Got a motion by Commissioner Higgins, second by Commissioner Gillespie, all in favor? We have some appointments. We have two for the Macon County planning board. I presume there's two seats open? Let me go through these to get back to the names.
We've got two applications.
There are two seats open. Jack, see if he's at your own.
Are these new folks coming on?
No, Betty's on it now.
Both of them are original.
And.
They're both presently on.
They're both presently on, renewing. Kathy Tinsley and Betty Walden.
They have not exceeded the term.
They're supposed to be approved as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Shields, second by Commissioner Bill, all in favor? We have two seats open on the.
Board of Health?
Board of Health. We have.
Which, which occupations or are they at large?
One is an at-large and one is for the optometry seat and has not been able to be filled.
And that guy, is that the PhD?
We have, uh, Joe Whittington, PhD.
Is he the optometrist? No, he's mental health.
He has a background in mental health.
Do we have?
Harvey Fouts is on there.
We have Gina Grebel, registered nurse. We've got four for two seats, Harvey Fouts. And we have Goseya Tiger, who gave us a tremendous, she's a, uh, registered nurse. And she gave us a tremendous resume, like a full resume.
Mr. Chairman, is this out of, I mean, you've got four qualified candidates there. Uh, and that's not really knowing except what we read on paper. Will it be fine? Since that's such an important board for the, for the head board chairman? And, and maybe you or whoever you designate to interview these, these folks for the board?
Paul, what do you?
Is there, is there a recommendation from the board of health?
They, no, they didn't, um, from, I, I don't think they, they, they didn't want to put a recommendation out because they wanted to put the emphasis on us basically.
Wouldn't you put it back on them, Paul, to interview?
We can, I mean, they'll do it. We asked them to.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't you let them interview? They've got four qualified people.
Frank, frankly, it's to their benefit to interview them.
Okay, well, we'll send it back to them and.
Can we give them, can, can we give them some direction there, Paul, about the, we got four qualified folks? And we ask that you interview these and give us the recommendation?
Give us two names.
That's why it's always been.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. They're, they've got their hands full. They're, they're interviewing lots right now. Between the director and these. I mean, I'm fine with that.
There'll probably be more of them on board than I could this.
All right, so the consensus of this board, we're going to send it to the, uh, back to the board of health for a recommendation on, on which two. Okay. Then I believe there is reason for a closed session for potential property acquisition. And then will we be taking any action?
Uh, no.
No action. All right. So see y'all, we'll come back out on adjourn till, after we get out of closed session. We'll come back on adjourn to five P M. on December tenth, right here at five west, sorry, recess. Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Gillespie to go into closed session.
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all.